Hello and welcome to the City of Cedar Falls Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for Wednesday, November 19th of 2025. Call this meeting to order. Could I get a roll call, please?
Albert Husky?
Here.
Grebovich?
Here.
Hartley?
Here.
Henderson?
Here.
Johnson?
Moser?
Here.
Stahlnecker? And Watkins are both absent. So we have three absents tonight, but we have a quorum.
All right. Thank you very much. First order of business tonight is looking for a motion for approval of minutes from the last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right, motion carries. It's time of the meeting for any public comment for anything that's not on the agenda if anyone would like to speak. All right, I will bring it back. There's no old business today. It's just new business. We have two items. Number two agenda item is amend future land use map for West Fork Crossing. And I'm going to assume Michelle is going to have this tonight.
I am, thank you. And I'm going to present both of the agenda items together.
Okay, thank you.
So the agenda items is the land use map amendment, also rezoning requests from A1 agriculture to RP planned residential and C1 commercial. The site is located west of the Cedar Falls High School and north of 27th Street. Also, there's a proposal to, for the future land amendment for the area in green that is south of West 27th and east of Hudson, Union Road. The applicant has many requests for the land use map. Although the land use map amendment is not based on a legal description, they're, and it's more showing of what the area would be on the map. For making it clear tonight, I wanted to go over exactly what they're asking for. And the first thing is they're proposing to change medium density to green belt floodplain. The second area is to change low density and green belt floodplain to park and rec. They're proposing to change the green belt floodplain to low density designation and change medium density to green belt floodplain. Five is the green belt floodplain to medium, I'm sorry, to neighborhood, commercial and mixed use. Number six is change medium density to green belt and floodway. And then seven was medium density to green belt floodway to park and rec. Eight is medium density to neighborhood, commercial and mixed use. And number nine is the area that's a little different, orange highlighted in white, is to change the neighborhood, commercial and mixed use to medium density. I'll go into more detail of this area in a moment. So first thing that we do is look at the comprehensive plan and looking at what the land use categories and any location criteria that's outlined in the comprehensive plan. And the low density is an area for residential development for single family detached. The medium density is emphasize of mixed housing types, including multifamily development, single family detached and detached, and townhomes with a density ranging from four to 12 units per acre. The neighborhood, commercial, mixed use emphasizes a range of low impact commercial uses that provide a variety of neighborhood services. And the green belt and floodplain slash open space emphasizes preserving environmental sensitive areas and crucial scenic corridors and possibly incorporating those into the city trail system and store water management. In the proposed land use map amendment, the applicant is proposing to reduce the greenway and floodplain corridor to low density residential. In 2024, new maps were produced from FEMA and the floodplain that was in this area was removed. And staff agrees that reducing or supports the reduction of the green belt and floodplain in this area. The medium density area is proposed to shrink a little bit, but overall the big area is still to remain. And the, going over the rezoning application, the applicant is proposing to meet the medium density characteristics. And the neighborhood, commercial, mixed use area, this area is suitable for commercials since it's next to the large high school and a large new development and along a corridor on the West 27th. The 2020, I'm sorry, 2012 comprehensive plan states that commercial growth is an important part of the city overall economic development strategy and important to correctly anticipate land needs for commercial and residential activities. While too much commercial land can limit growth and doesn't need too much commercial can produce inefficient land patterns, scattered development restrict of other land uses. For this reason, increasing the amount of commercial, following their request to add the neighborhood commercials expend off of West Fork subdivision on the 27th Street could be problematicly. However, staff recommends also changing the area in the neon green on the little map below to neighborhood, commercial and mixed use designation to balance that of the commercial retail uses in this area.
Do you have a larger map of that, Michelle? By any chance? There we go.
And so that area proposed to change is in green. All right, so that's the land use map amendment. And moving on to the rezoning for West Fork Crossing. The criteria for rezoning is fairly simple. There's three criteria that we look at. And one is if the area is access to public services. And at this point, it is access to public services. When they, when the applicant had proposed West Fork Crossing in 2021, this area did not have sewer. So now it is sewed. The second criteria is access to adequate street network. And they are proposing to connect to the approved West Fork Crossing to the north and provide two connections to 27th Street. And there's already a connection to Union Road to the north and also a connection to the high school. And then if the third criteria is if it meets the comprehensive plan. If the land use map amendments are approved, then the applicant would be able to rezone the property to RP. The RP planned residential does require a master plan. In the RP zoning district, it allows mixed use of townhomes, multifamily and single family detached dwellings, which the applicant is proposing. The street network is form of a modified grid, but more detail will be looked at at the preliminary plat stage. The applicant proposes setbacks of 25 feet in the front and 20 on the corner lots that aren't the front and five feet on the side and 30 in the rear.
So Michelle, can you give a little context to the drawing that's on the screen here and why the northern area is different than the southern area?
Thank you. I did put those in my, so the staff asked the applicant to show the undeveloped area of the holdings that is approved. And this is how it is approved at this point. The purple is in our one zoning district. And as I mentioned, the preliminary plat was approved in 2021 and it was amended in 2023. Connections and phasing between the two developments are important in the overall discussion, but mostly our discussion is focusing on that lower area that's in the yellow and pink and green. So the applicant is keeping, being true to the topology of this area and environmental features by, by using the natural flow for the stormwater. They also, as mentioned already, that the flood maps have removed this area from the floodplain. However, once the preliminary plat does get submitted, they will have to supply a environmental report to verify any other environmental features in this area. And the stormwater management areas will be in tracks B, C, and D. The applicant also proposes 2.6 acres for the RP development for a park. And this will be combined with the RP preliminary plat to create a five acre park. There's many different variables still, and this will also be reevaluated at the preliminary plat.
So on the screen, you'll see the purple area is the, is the parkland that was dedicated or was proposed for dedication in the R1 zoned area. And then the blue on the map is what is being proposed with this RP zoning, rezoning. So that, those two pieces together make up about five, a five acre park.
The applicant also proposes trails throughout the subdivision, having wider sidewalks for some of those trails, also separate 10 foot wide sidewalk trail that will be connecting the park to West 27th Street. Eventually, the trail system will connect the high school through West Fork, through the development to the north to the Robertson Dresser Sports In the phasing plan, the applicant proposes entire development to be done in 10 phases. We review the phasing plan to ensure that critical connections occur in order that, in order that supports good traffic circulation as development is built out. And looking at the critical connections of the entire holdings of the property owner, the applicant proposes an east-west connection Union Road to Waterburg. And that connection's already been completed with the first phase of West Fork Crossing. The second connection will be a north-south connection along the west side of the development, connecting Whale Parkway to West 27th Street. This will be done in two phases. The third connection is another north-south connection, connecting Waterburg Drive through Cross Creek Drive, connecting Waterburg to West 27th. Again, this will be done in two phases. And then the fourth connection that we see as critical connection is an east-west connection, connecting the development to the high school property. And once the development gets to the high school property, the high school has said they would finish that connection on their property. And with that, staff recommends a discussion of the two applications and request to set a public hearing date for December 3rd. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff on that?
I have a couple of questions. With respect to the environmental report, how do, how do you know that, or how do you mandate that that's going to be done? Is that part of the approval process that that is subject to that being completed?
Correct. Correct. It is part of the requirements for a preliminary plat. And it's also on the checklist, so we'll make sure that gets submitted.
And then you mentioned there's 10 phases.
Correct.
That has to do with the connectivity. Again, how, what happens if we, they get to the fourth phase and say, you know, they want to stop the project?
Well, I guess we don't have much control over that. They own the land. So, but we assume that, you know, that's, that's our business to make money off developing the land. I guess, I guess we would cross that bridge when we get there. I mean, there's, you know, things that we would do, probably the city would do if something would happen and the street wouldn't be completed. You know, it might become some sort of a city project. But we don't anticipate that occurring because what we do with the phasing plan is we ensure that the critical connections happen earlier in the development so that there's a significant portion of land yet to be developed in the later phases. So they, it encourages those connections to happen first so that, you know, there's, there's more of a chance that that, what you, the scenario you identified would not happen.
I see. And what else is my question? Is there a timeline in which the, these phases are mapped out to be completed?
So I don't, I think you can ask that to the developer. They probably have some idea about the full build out, but it's a large project. So I'm not sure they can guarantee it in a certain period of time. But that's a good question for the developer.
Kevin Fittrell with West Fork Panther Builders. On something like this, no. I mean, it, it all depends. Typically developments, if you look at Wild Horse, Harbers, some of the bigger developments, they're 20, 25 lots at a time. It all comes down to velocity, what's happening in the market, and how many lots do we need at once? It's, as you can see, it's a big financial investment. So 10 years, 12 years total for the whole development.
So a lot of it depends upon whether people buy the lots, et cetera.
Yep. Yep. I mean, you know, the first edition of West Fork, we did 62 lots. So we, we went in, went very strong with the TIF available. I don't know if you could show the phasing again, Michelle?
It's on the, they have it in front of them.
Oh, okay. We are taking from 27th this next year. As we go with preliminary plats, we would be going from 27th all the way through that pink and tying back. So you are looking at another fairly large phase, larger than normal, because we've seen good lot purchases lately. But that doesn't mean we don't go through another time where, you know, things stall out and we have to slow down what we do.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for staff? Or does petitioner want to speak at all any to this? I mean?
Yes. You know, just thank you for looking at it and considering putting it on in December 3rd. It is a, it's been a very good area. We're excited. Being next to the high school with the commercial, with the multifamily, single family, having different type of products in this development is important and very common to what you're seeing today. If you look at down at North Liberty, if you look at Liberty High School, if you look at Waqee, you're starting to see gas stations, you're starting to see small commercial around the neighborhoods, around the schools. And that's what we're trying to do is mimic what we're seeing across island developments. So, okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there someone from the public would like to speak to this? Come up and?
I do have a question.
Yeah, you can come up, just give us your name and address and?
Thank you. Thomas Damgard, 3828 West 27th Street. I'm on the corner of Union Road and 27th, the southeast corner. I own the land that the little green section just east of Union Road is going to be considered here. I just wondered, I'm really not sure why that's happening or what, for what purpose that's happening. Someone explain that to me? You know, this is the first I've heard of it with this letter a couple of days ago.
Is this the only question you have?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'll have to refer that to staff to comment on that.
We can, so as Michelle explained, the comprehensive plan is, is just a guide to future development. And so it's kind of a blob map that shows generally where we'd want commercial to happen in the future. That map was developed in 2012. So before any of the development was proposed here. So it was shown, do you have the land use, future land use map, Michelle, that shows the larger, there we go. So there's, there's commercial shown in the red area on either side of that. You can see kind of the dark pink or dark red there. That's commercial shown as potential future commercial nodes. The area in the southeast side was rather large. And so for this neighborhood area, it may be too much commercial to be supported by this area. So the thought was if they're proposing commercial in West Fork further to the east at this time, because there's a demand for that with that large neighborhood, we would take that and reduce the commercial proposal for this corner. And then instead, the proposal is to show that area as medium density housing rather than commercial, just where that orange area is. And then the two red areas would remain as potential future commercial areas. So we, of course, would be happy to discuss that with you and, and what your thoughts are about that. But?
Right. You know, I have no intention of selling.
Right.
I intended to go to my, we're almost a hundred year farm there.
Yeah.
And I intended to go to my children and my daughter and grandsons. I really don't want to mess up anything that has to do with any future use of the land for them. So anyway, that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. I was going to say, and if you need to meet with staff, you can to discuss that further. Okay, thank you. All right. Any more comment on this? Otherwise, just entertain a motion to set a public hearing on the, we'll have to do two motions. Now, was roll call vote or a voice vote is fine?
Just voice vote, it's fine.
Okay, so?
Before we do that, with respect to the questions that homeowner had, is that something that's critical or a requirement in order to accomplish the goals of the development? Or was this determined by the city to make those changes?
So our recommendation to the developer was, we felt like adding more commercial to this area, particularly since you and I is also planning some additional commercial. We felt like that may be too much commercial to be supported in this area. And of course, we don't want commercial that's going to dilute, you know, and not be successful. So our proposal to the developer was, if you're going to propose commercial here, we may want to reduce the amount of commercial on this other corner. So that would be what staff would recommend is not to have a net increase at all in the amount of commercial, but reducing it in this one area to add it to this other area. Because the other area that's proposing to be developed is ripe right now for development. And as the gentleman said, you're not planning to do anything but farm it right now at that other corner. So, so, and it may remain that way for a very long time.
That's my intent.
Right, yes.
Ask one more question.
Yeah, come up to the, come up to the mic, please.
I would like to know who Money Pit LLC is.
So the developer can answer the question?
I mean, it's, it's. Is that Brent Dahlstrom?
Yes. That's Brent Dahlstrom, and he has others.
And others. Okay. That's scared my wife with that name.
So just to be clear.
Wonderful development in the area.
So just to be clear, the comprehensive plan is just to show potential in the future. It is just a guide. At what point in time, your family or your heirs or whatever may decide not to farm anymore. It shows what potential could happen at that corner. So it's not saying that you have to do that or, you know, that it can remain that way for a very long time.
It's potential.
It's just potential. And right now, it's shown as potential commercial. What we're proposing here is to reduce that slightly, the commercial area designation on the map, the potential map, and change that to medium density housing. So as I say, it's all up to the landowner when, if and when that would ever occur.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Karen. Good, good explanation. Any more discussion? Otherwise, entertain a motion to set a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Could all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, all right, that motion carries for the agenda item two. Now I'm looking for a motion for the rezoning of the property.
So moved. Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right. The public meeting would be set for December 3rd for both of these items. All right. And that ends all agenda items tonight. Is there any commission updates?
I don't have anything for you tonight, other than just say happy Thanksgiving next week.
All right. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right. All those opposed? All right, that ends our meeting. Appreciate everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you.